This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, posted on municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the planning board secretary. Fire exits are located on the eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or any other device to kindly put it on silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as law.
This is Monday, July 8, 2019. Ms. Lou Minigaw, ladies and gentlemen.
Here.
Mayor John Mark.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Chris Akka.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Vanberg.
Barbara Kitzler.
Here. The first thing that we'll go over is that there's a change, there's review what the agenda is. Right now, we're going to be looking at the minutes for June 10th. There's one, there are two applications, one for 1105 Main Street and the other one for 1401 Ocean Avenue, otherwise known as the Berkeley. Jack, regarding Berkeley?
Regarding 1401 Ocean?
Yes, regarding 1401 Ocean.
George? I'm sure members of the board received this afternoon a letter from the master redevelopment council, which I'm going to have marked into the record by the secretary. I'll read it to everyone just so we can understand what it's about. It talks about the site plan for the Berkeley Oceanfront. Dear Chairperson Chris Akka and members of the board, we represent Asbury Partners LLC, the master developer of the waterfront redevelopment area, in accordance with the 2002 City of Asbury, excuse me, the City of Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment Plan WRP is amended. We have just become aware of your draft reference application, which we understand is scheduled for a hearing this evening before the planning board. A way of background, May of 2018, Asbury Partners was asked to review plans in connection with minor changes proposed to the creation of new restrooms near the Berkeley's pool and on its roof. We determined that the proposed alterations at that time were de minimis in nature and did not constitute redevelopment, that the applicant should consult with the applicable municipal officials for guidance as to the approvals that are required for the proposed alterations under state law and/or local ordinance. Please be advised that we have reviewed the plans proposed in connection with the application for this evening, my interjection, and they are not only inconsistent with the master developer previously previously reviewed, but significantly modify the scope and nature of what was originally proposed. The proposed application clearly constitutes quote redevelopment, close quote, under the Local Housing Redevelopment Law, NJSA 40, uppercase A, colon, 12A dash 1 at Sec., and the applicant has failed to comply with the requirements of the WRP, which specifically requires that no land use applications can be made or entertained unless or until any property owner has followed the terms of the WRP, which include, among other things, designation as a subsequent developer. Therefore, the planning board is without jurisdiction to proceed or entertain a hearing of the application at tonight's meeting. Please let us know if you have any questions. Very true, you are Jennifer and quarter member of Chisa, Shanahan, and Gantumase, and they represent the Oceanfront Redevelopment. So, long and short of this, I know it's the 11th hour, but the way WRP works is there's various procedures you have to go through to be designated as a developer, and their designation comes through and is empowered with the master developer, who in this case is Asbury Partners. They're claiming that if you don't go through that process, the planning board has no jurisdiction. We already went through that many years ago with the Britwoods case, where Britwoods tried to come before the planning board, before they in fact went before the master developer, claiming that the master developer was, should not have been allowed to do that. Courts upheld the plan the way it was. Be that as may, in addition, if there's going to be any major redevelopment, it still goes through the TRCO and various procedures before it gets here. So although it's the 11th hour, they're correct. I'm not saying they're correct in their designation, but if there's a challenge by Mr. McGil, his client, that determination would be made by the board, would in fact be made by the city's redevelopment council by looking at the plan. We rely on them. We don't get this, we're second or third base before you hit home plate. So we would not necessarily dispute that because historically, it's always gone in their direction. They are empowered to make these decisions. And of course, if there's going to be a challenge, we have to go to the redevelopment council. Normally, I would say, if we had jurisdiction, I'd say, let's carry it to a date certain to preserve the notices and not have the applicant go through the cost. We don't know how long this process is going to take, number one, and number two, since it's a jurisdictional issue, we don't have jurisdiction to hear the case, so I can't say, let's preserve the notices and not have to make the client do it. Whenever we can, we always endeavor to do that to save the applicant time and money. But in this case, we really can't do that.
So this application didn't go to the technical review committee first?
No.
Okay.
No, did not go to TRC. I mean, how it happened, how it got here, I don't know. I only know that this letter came at the 11th hour. I saw this letter about five this afternoon, or 4:30. The contents were written over the phone. I didn't see the letter itself until I got it received. I had a discussion with Mr. McGil, trying to figure out some way to pull a rabbit out in half, but there really isn't one.
So if I could just add, this matter, this has been a year of process, really, from last August 2018, when Carl Kim, who was the redevelopment attorney, looked at it and said that it was, it just needed site plan review. So that's why we're here. It's nothing that we chose to do, we just followed the process that we were directed to follow. So we're here because of that. And I think it has something to do with the fact that the Berkeley Oceanfront is one of those unique properties in the plan in that it's supposed to stay. If you look at the plan, you see all the donuts and then there's the Berkeley. So it's a permitted use, it's already redeveloped, and I can't speak for Mr. Kim, but I think some of that went into his determination. In any event, I did ask Jack to carry the matter so that the notices could be preserved. I understand and respect his opinion in that regard. I did reach out for the attorney, Jen Porter. I do have a call into her. We'll take it up with redevelopment council. I don't know the process from here, does it get sent over to redevelopment council from the board, or is that from the city?
No, that would be something that you would go through that process directly with redevelopment council and whatever the process is under the plan with master developer.
So, just in closing, it is the 11th hour, and I know the board had nothing to do with that, but my client's here. We were able to call off the architect, which is good, but my client came in from New York to be here to provide testimony, so he just wanted me to note his frustration on the record that this wasn't your process and we received a letter somewhere around four. Within their rights to do that, they could have showed up tonight and sat there and then said, oh, by the way. So in that sense, but it is still fairly late. We're here, we can proceed, we were ready, and I know the board was ready to hear us. So in that regard, we'll just move on. Jack, the matter is not being dismissed.
No, we'll keep the application, and hopefully it'll all resolve itself and you'll be back here. Only the only thing you'll have to do is re-notice at that time, and the application will just be kept pending. And of course, I don't, so we don't run out of time. I want to make sure that there's an understanding that even though it's pending, the clock will run on the 120 days for us to.
We'll wait for the time for the board, that the board has to act in the matter. And I'll discuss with my client their options, whether they want to proceed along the subsequent rede，则rber, if that's what they need to do or have to do, or it's not worth fighting about.
I think you're going to really need to get the city redevelopment council in on the conversation between you and the master developer.
Yeah, I think that will control, then we have to weigh our options whether or not we're going to have a dispute with Istor or not, whether it's worth it to do that. So those are the things we have to work out. Thank the board for your time, and I want you to get on with your other business.
I would also like to apologize to anyone in the public that came. This was, like we said, we didn't receive the letter until 4:30 this afternoon. There was no way for us to tell anybody ahead of time that this was going to happen. Sorry to do that, and I know your time is valuable, as is everyone else's, but this will, we'll see where it goes. Thank you. Okay, 1105 Main? Oh, I'm sorry, the minutes? We have, I'd like to put out that, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for June 10th?
So moved, except for there's a minor.
Okay.
On page two, the seventh line from the bottom, where it says presidential facade. I think it means residential. Put that correction.
On page two.
Where it says Miller, Miller notes mentioning adding window, second page. That letter will be empty number one for master developer. It should be residential dot presidential.
Towards the bottom. A second there.
Who's next?
Anything else that anybody had for the minutes? All right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes with that modification?
I thought we did.
I think we did. All right?
Move to the second.
Okay.
Hi.
Thank you.
I have to abstain.
Yeah, I'm abstaining also. I wasn't there. All right, let's get going.
Okay, you ready, Mark?
I'm ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mark Sternberg on behalf of the applicant.
Mayor, I've reviewed the notice, we have jurisdiction to proceed. Thank you.
I would like to proceed, I'm paying for my client. This application is basically, as you may recall, I don't know, some of you were on the board in 2017, the property was approved for the Dollar Tree store and the development of that area of the block, as well as to the north on Main Street, the old Getty Station, which is now in the process of development and construction. The original approval for the construction on the Getty site, that's all we're here about tonight, provided for retail on the first floor and residences on the second floor. It's turned out through marketing and otherwise that we have an opportunity to accommodate some local businesses on the second floor, or basically, and which is a permitted use, changing our plan to use the second floor for commercial space, offices basically. We have our tenants here to explain what they would be doing, and eliminating the residential.
Okay.
Because of that, we need a few more parking spaces than we have, so that we need a parking variance. Other than that, everything is permitted.
Can I just ask just a legal question here, Jack? Many of us were not here then, because I'm looking at who approved, and we're part of the board, so how does that work?
We could do it one of two ways. Mark, did you have any objection to the company members listening to the substitution voting on it based on what we're saying tonight?
No, because it's a totally different application. It's, we want to change something that was approved, so that change is a new application. So I feel that everybody here would be eligible.
Yeah, as long as the applicant's okay with it, then we should proceed.
Okay.
Let everybody have an.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to call Bill Stuckey, who's the property manager for the owners for the LLC. You want to be sworn?
Please, you swear your first name during this procedure.
Yes.
State your name and address.
William Stuckey.
Are you listening?
S-T-U-C-K-E-Y.
Thank you.
Mark, if we're interrupting again, let's get Mark's professional sworn in so that this is about.
Are you writing, do you swear on this one you give during this procedure, will it be the chief or will it be the manager?
Yes.
State your names and your affiliation with the city.
Michael Sullivan, Parkgate, Insipid.
Thank you.
Doc Fallon, Insight Engineering, Boarding.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Bill, you started this project from the very beginning, including the Dollar Tree store and getting everything on board.
Yes.
And the last phase of this is reconstruction of the Getty site into the two-story building, retail, and originally approved for residences. What changed?
You know, Pat Passano, the owner, has been doing things in Asbury for 20 years and talks to people on a regular basis, and a couple of people approached him and said, you know, it's difficult, they have businesses, one of our potential tenants has a business in town, M Studios, and they've been here for almost 15 years, and she said, you know, parking is a real problem for both my employees and any customers that may come here. And then we were approached by a representative of Dr. Nagy's office, a cosmetologist, and they said, you know, we'd really like to be in Asbury, do you have any space? So we sort of rethought the second floor of this building and felt that we could accommodate office space up there on the second floor. So that provided the impetus for us to come here today. There, you know, as you know, we've been working for about a year and a half to complete the redevelopment of that side of the block. The Dollar Tree store has been done for about a year, and we helped Jeff at the dry cleaners restucco his building, pave his part of the parking lot, and put a new roof on his building. And our building on the Getty site, the cladding's going to go up on that starting the end of the week, so within a month, it's all going to look like it's completely done. What, in changing the use from apartments to office space, we are short an additional 13 spots. And the way that we are proposing to deal with that here, at least for me in layman's terms, we were going to make the nine spaces that have always been there behind the building for customer parking only, and have the employees of the building park on the street. When we came in with the application for this block two and a half years ago, we did a, an analysis of the available parking spaces within two blocks of this site.
Do you want to mark this, Jack?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it should be. Was that previously marked at the last meeting?
Yes.
That's up here, we'll be marking it.
You want it.
Yeah, you just mark it, and then when you're done, it has to stay.
That's all.
Would that be a one tonight's date?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So just simply, what this, what this plan shows, there's 136 spaces on street parking within a couple blocks of this block on Main Street. I've been working with Pat here for the last five years, and I'm very familiar with the parking in this area. I've never had a problem, and in front of this building on this side of the block, there's never more than one or two cars parked, so I think, at least from a layman's point of view, there's adequate parking for the employees to park. And I think this map so indicates.
Now, can we explain the map? Are you the one who's going to explain that? Go ahead. Explain that.
Yeah, show us where this whole building is. Yeah, well, the Dollar Tree store is at the corner of Third and Main, and the Getty site, what we call the Getty Building from the corner of Fourth and Main. And so we looked at counting on-street parking spaces within two blocks of this and came up with 136 spots.
And that was within, what time period? I mean, did you do any kind of analysis to find out within what time period?
No.
How many cars were there, not there?
No.
Okay.
What time and day was this count done?
Our traffic consultant came down, we walked the area, it was like midday.
On a weekday?
Yeah, on a weekday, yes.
Is that a count of the parking spaces?
That's just a count of the parking spaces, not the occupier.
Okay.
That's.
But we, we have a planner and engineer here tonight, and part of your ordinance permits some on-street parking, but we developed a plan of Main Street, so we'll get into that. But we wanted to show you that there is space, that we don't have 136 employees or 136 customers. And we do have the tenants here tonight to explain their operations, so we can get a better picture of how it can work.
Do you have questions for me before Jenna from M Studios?
Yeah, please. I think it was your testimony, you submitted this two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
But it's dated May 14th, 2019, so is it recent, or is it two and a half years old?
Oh, no, this, this application was.
No, 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 I'm talking about your parking. You said you submitted this to the planning board two and a half years ago.
Yes, in our initial application.
Right, so, but it's dated May 14th of 2019, so it hasn't been revised.
It has not been revised. I had our traffic consultant put a date on it before the submission to you for this application.
All right, and I'd like it to change, I'd like to have that date changed to be reflecting of when that count was taken.
Okay.
As opposed to May 14.
Okay.
So do you know when?
No, I'd have to look up the.
That's fine, it's probably in 2017 for the original application.
We can see now.
May 13, 2016.
Okay.
2016.
May 13, 2016, we're told. Now, to your knowledge, have there been any changes in the street parking signs, are waves of parking where you can't park in the last two, you're there all the time.
I can't, I can't say that I've walked these streets and remember what was there three years ago and what's there today. So I mean, I'm not trying to get specific, 136 spots, 130, 128, you know, the reason that we did this for the original application was to show we were a little bit short of parking for Dollar Tree and on the Getty Building. I think it was, it was not a huge number, but you know, I did this to show that there was parking on the street available, and you know.
Right, and this isn't, not on you whatsoever, but you're not aware, or are you aware of since May 13th, 2016, and today, how many other applicants from this immediate area have come in with the same exact map, saying, we also have the same spot? So, and again, this is not just for you, this is for everybody in the future, because I know of at least two, be it 910 Fourth and be it the R Bar across the street, and they both come in and say, oh, there's plenty of off-the-street parking. Now, how many times can any board say, there's plenty of parking when multiple people keep on using the same parking spots?
Yeah, and.
Let our professionals answer that also.
Yeah, Pat and I talked about that. We know the restaurant's being built across the street, and our people will be there from eight or nine in the morning until five, and then the restaurant, you know, will be more of an evening crowd, so there is, isn't going to be, I don't think, a huge overlap there.
Maybe we'll get into this more when the planner gives his testimony, but in general, I think the board is seeing a lot more activity on Main Street with the new revitalization project going on. There actually may be a loss of some parking spaces once it's all said and done, when everything is striped out. And I know that the city council has recently adopted an ordinance for, to extend two-hour parking, not only on Main Street, but also on those cross streets on the 800 blocks, Fourth Ave, Third Ave, Second Ave. So that, that will have some higher parking turnover as opposed to a all-day kind of parking situation. So I think there's some things we'll have to talk about when the planner gives his testimony.
Okay, it's above my pay grade.
Before you, before you go, one quick question. How many offices do you intend to put up there?
Two.
Just two. And they're here tonight to talk about their businesses.
Okay.
So as you kind of know, it's a very small parking demand, so Jenna?
Jenna, you're up.
Jenna.
Sure.
Let it get squared in.
Do you swear upon this moving during these proceedings will be the chief or will it be the manager?
I do.
State your name and address. Are you listening?
Jenna Zilincar, last name is Zilincar, Z-I-L-I-N-C-A-R.
Jen, what is your business now?
My business is called M Studio. We've been in town for 14 years. We started on Madison Avenue, now we're on Banks Avenue, and we'd love the opportunity to move to Main Street, to North Asbury. We've experienced a lot of issues with garbage due to the restaurants. We have a professional business where we have clients come to our office, and it's unacceptable for them to have to walk by piles of garbage from restaurants.
What do you do?
Design and marketing. We actually did the marketing for the city of Asbury Park in 2009.
And, and how many employees total?
There's six of us. We've adapted a flexible, remote schedule, so there's between three to six people in the office on a daily basis, because we do allow some of our employees to work remotely, just because it's a digital world and we can offer that.
Do you, do you have any parking now?
No.
Is that dated with your unit that you occupy in Madison?
We do not have parking available to us.
And when you say you see clients, how many do you see?
On the, like, maybe one or two a week, comma, but remotely, it's usually like conference calls. We are fortunate enough to have clients, you know, across the country, so we have a lot of communications via Google Hangouts.
Okay, so basically, there wouldn't be very many customers coming to the building?
No, not at all.
This is just mostly the three to six employees on a staggered basis?
Correct.
And, and what are your hours of operation, basically?
It depends on the day, it's either 8:30 to 4:30, or nine to 5:30.
Monday through Friday?
Correct.
No weekends?
No weekends.
No evenings?
Well, there's weekends and evenings for myself, but.
And my new work from home at that point?
Yes.
Okay. Basically, it's a, it's a quote-unquote nine-to-five operation, Monday through Friday, so that there wouldn't be any evening use of either the onsite parking spaces or the street parking spaces?
No, my employees turn to dust up on the block.
And you want to stay?
I would love to stay, you know, I've been here for 14 years, so you can imagine, I've seen the evolution of the city of Asbury Park from, you know, the Oyster Festival being 10 people to, you know, to what it is today. So for, for me to be able to stay in Asbury is a huge deal, and just to also be a part of North Asbury, the transformation that's happening there is really, means something to me and to my team, you know, it's, we're proud to be here, we're proud to see what the city has become, and, you know, we just need to grow, and we need to have a little more flexibility than we do today. You know, when we moved into that space, there wasn't a restaurant there, there wasn't half the businesses that were there, and unfortunately, restaurants moved in and other businesses, which is great for the city and great for the commerce, but necessarily wasn't great for our business and what we had to deal with there. So, you know, you know, we would love to continue to work and thrive in Asbury, as well as like create exposure for the town through the, the marketing that we do.
Jenna, how are your three to six employees at any one time, how many, do you, are you aware of how many drive to the office?
Well, a lot of us are local, myself and a few other employees live in Wanamasa, so we tend to ride our bikes sometimes, too. So there is that, there is that, those days, especially in the warmer months, when there is no cars at all. So either, you know, on a, on a cold winter day, you can expect three to six cars, but in the summer, you know, yeah, there is a lot. I mean, I walk to work now, so, yeah, who knows? We'll see.
What is, any questions?
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any others in the public?
Anyone? Nope. Okay.
Is it?
Yeah. Have a seat, yeah, you're there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you swear upon this moving during these proceedings will be the chief or will it be the manager?
I do.
State your name and address.
China Batista, B-A-T-T-I-S-T-H.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. My name's China, I'm a nurse practitioner, I'm in practice with a plastic surgeon, Dr. Michael Nagy of Plastic, sorry, his office is in Wall, New Jersey. He's been in practice for about eight years in New Jersey, functions as a fully boarded, boarded certified plastic surgeon. We're looking to expand a secondary office, which would focus on non-surgical cosmetic and non-surgical rejuvenation type of procedures that I would be the primary provider for.
How many employees do you anticipate?
It would be myself and a front desk person.
And then you see, patients?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say probably two to three an hour. It's a higher turnover, shorter appointment times.
Everything is scheduled by appointment?
Yes.
No walk-ins?
No walk-ins.
And, and you're seeking to expand your base to the Asbury Park?
Yeah, I'm looking to market to the local community.
Local community. And, and your hours of operation are basically Monday through Friday, a couple Saturday p.
And, and you're seeking to expand your base to the Asbury Park?
Yeah, moving the market to the local community.
Local community. And, and, um, your hours of operation are basically Monday through Friday, a couple Saturday mornings?
Yep, a couple Saturday mornings, maybe one or two evening for those who have nine-to-five jobs.
All right, and that would be weekday?
Yeah, what are the hours?
Well-
So it's a, it would be Monday through Friday, some Saturday mornings, and one or two evening hour, like till eight o'clock.
And those would be weekday evenings or slightly?
Weekday, yes.
Not weekends?
Correct.
So you would be open in the evening?
Yes.
Okay. Till like nine?
No, till eight.
Till eight and, and-
During the week.
Right, but it wouldn't be on Friday night or Saturday night?
No.
Maybe those nights when the restaurants would probably be more in operation in the area?
I'd like to attend those restaurants on Friday.
You, you said that you have two to three appointments per hour or hour? Do they ever double up? In other words, you have three people and then-
Waiting, yeah, I understand. Do you have three, three people waiting for the three spots?
No.
So how do you, how do you schedule?
So usually I would schedule two at a time for the, for the block. So that's why I'm saying there would be two, two people there at a time. And everything's on the hour. I don't have double booking right now. I don't really plan to. It makes for harder work. It's harder to keep up with patients. And I, you know, my, kind of my theory of how to treat people, and I've been in practice for 15 years, is I want my clients to be happy and have a good experience. So I'm not looking to have a waiting room full of people.
So your clients, you would have two at a time? Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll ask the same question. Do, do you anticipate that you're, to yourself and the front desk receptionists will probably drive to the office?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
I live in Howell.
Camp bicycle.
Camp bicycle.
Canoeber.
Canoeber, that's true.
Yeah, we're not trying to hide anything. We feel that we have two low-key operations. And one is an Asbury-based company now, um, using on-street parking. And, and we feel that these are two low-key type of operations in which we're not talking about the, uh, larger medical practices where they have, you know, the dermatologist, that's 12 people waiting for, that's not going to happen yet. Anybody else got any more questions, China?
So, so the, this may not be for, for you in particular, but more so, and I don't know if the planner will speak to this or whatnot, but when we're talking, we're talking about two businesses that we're talking about now. I don't know if they're contracts, I don't know what's going on, I don't know what level you're at at this point. But okay, is that contract for a year? The lease for a year? Is it for two years? Is it for five years? And if that's going to be answered later, that's fine. And if you- Are, are you already sworn in?
It's sworn, okay.
Okay.
What, what, what terms of lease would we be?
Yeah, what kind of a lease are we talking about?
We're looking at, uh, an initial term of five years with two to three five-year renewal options.
Okay.
So these are not, we, we would not do this for short leases.
Okay, so the leases are five years, so whatever this board decides, one way or another, we're committing to five years. At least in this situation.
Yeah.
Unless there's growth, obviously, that, that may happen in these two businesses, which we always hope that there is growth in businesses. Okay, okay.
And do, do you have any idea what type of retail you're going to have on the first floor?
Not yet. We, we haven't gotten there. Um, no negotiations have been made in this form.
And, and what is your plan about the parking spots, the nine spots that are in the back? Are they going to be restricted to customers?
Customers for these two businesses or all customers?
All the customers.
So not just for these two businesses?
Yeah.
Because we need at least nine just for these two businesses. Eight for these two businesses. Because she's, she's got six and we've got three, two here.
Now, we, we were going to assign the parking spaces in the lot or building for customer use only. The employees of these businesses would have to park on the street.
Okay, so it's all customers, not just these two businesses, it's all customers for all the retail. Perhaps the Dollar Store also.
No, they have-
Okay, just checking.
Hey.
Okay, alright.
Which, which by the way, isn't really that full of anything quite.
Okay. And anybody else have any questions? Nope. Public? Anyone? Public questions? Okay.
Thank you.
I can't grant you more questions. Walt?
Yes, I do. Walter Hopkins, H-O-P-K-I-N.
Just, just one second, please. Are we, we just wanted to let you know if, if you're here for this application or a different one?
Yes, for a week.
Okay, that's, that's been, okay. I just didn't want you to sit for no reason.
Now you got it.
Okay. Alright.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's sworn in, it's sworn in.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we're sworn in.
I'm sworn in, you're in the club.
Okay, well, yes, what, what, you testified before this board before both as an engineer and a planner, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And you give the board your credentials that some of these people weren't here at this time?
Sure, I have a-
He, by the way, Walt, the, the original application in 2017, was correct?
That's correct. I have a Bachelor of Science from Drexel University. I'm a licensed, uh, professional engineer in the States, in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. I'm a licensed professional engineer in this, uh, professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm also a certified municipal engineer. And I have had the pleasure of testifying before your board previously.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, so, um, from a, a engineering point of view, I think there were some, uh, engineering questions. Wait, no, we'll, we'll put that afterwards. Let's put on your planner's hat.
Okay.
Okay. What, what have you reviewed and concluded as to this application for, uh, variance for parking?
So I have had the benefit of listening to the board's, uh, professionals' questions, so maybe I'll, I'll touch on a few of those. Ju- just to orient the board, the Dollar Tree was part of the original application. The Dollar Tree has, uh, its own parking area, uh, which is compliant with your, with your ordinance. So for the board's consideration, the Dollar Tree, and Madam Chair mentioned something about it, is, is self-sustaining as far as parking, uh, off-street. What, uh, the Getty site, the other part of this project, um, was approximately 4,700 square foot footprint building with two stories. The, the ground floor was retail, the second floor was originally proposed to be residential and you've heard that we're proposing to change that.
That was going to be four apartments, right?
That's correct, four apartments.
Which required parking?
Which required, uh, roughly four parking spaces. This site has nine off-street parking spaces, so it, it, we're starting with nine. Um, your, your planner's, uh, report indicates, and I, I think Mr. Stuckey may have misspoke. We're not 13 parking spaces short. The original application required 13 and a half, and we're slightly more than that now. Uh, so it's four and a half spaces that we're shy at this point, off-street. What I can tell you is, I have reviewed the, the study that was done by a prior consultant. And although I have not verified the 136 spaces, I have verified spaces immediately adjacent to this property. There are nine spaces, off-street parking spaces today, that are available to this site along the frontage, uh, either on 4th or on Main. There's also another 12, uh, uh, on just this side of the block. So if you go around 4th and Main, there's, uh, and 3rd, there's another 12 spaces available, uh, today. There's another 18 available on 4th and Main or 3rd on the other side of the street. So I, I stopped my, my independent verification of that, uh, to that point because to me, it felt like there was enough parking, uh, immediately adjacent or across the street to this site. What's being proposed today, in, in my opinion as a planner, is an improvement because you, you really, there's, there's many reasons. But first and foremost, there's no chance for an impact to your school system. This is a, a clean ratable, uh, both of them, that would be located on the second floor. Um, it's clear that it's become better suited to this office space because the, the tenants are here tonight. The demand is self-evident. There was a couple of questions raised in the, in the, in the letters, um, and the trash will remain private. So that would be no burden to the city. There was a question about signage, um, that, um, that your engineer raised. And it was a good, good comment. Originally, there was the mix of the residential and, and the, uh, retail. So we're going to modify those signs to say "customers only." So as Mr. Stuckey testified, the employees would be parking, uh, and, and the way I count it, there's enough parking spaces immediately adjacent to the site that the employees could park at. There was also a comment about, uh, this is another benefit, that the, um, utilities, the impact to the utility. So the, the, uh, office space actually has a lower demand on water and sewer than the residential. So there'd be, uh, less impact to your public, uh, infrastructure in addition to your school system with the office space.
Now, the redevelopment ordinance does allow for reduced parking, is that correct?
Yes, it does. And, and not only that, uh, but it encourages, it, it aims to encourage pedestrian traffic along Main Street, which is exactly what this would do.
Would you mind, um, and I don't know if the other board members need this, but I'm, I'm, I'm losing sight a little bit of what, um, what was proposed as opposed to what is being proposed now? Because I truly don't remember what was, because I know you're telling me differences.
Sure.
But I don't know what it was and what it is now, you know, so-
Were you talking about just the second floor or you want the whole building?
I'd like, I'd like to know the whole building because the decision is really on the whole building. And the decision is not only on the two, second floor. Because we have to, we have to hear what, how much you need for the first floor. Because you're doing retail, you're doing off-street parking, so I, I kind of feel that I need to know both.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else feels that way, but I-
No, no.
I would feel better about that.
That's not bad, okay.
So I understand it, so.
That's a, that's a fair question. And, and so it's a roughly 47-
Do a synopsis, it's okay.
4,700 square foot footprint, two stories, retail on the first floor, previously approved four apartments on the second floor.
Okay.
Four apartments.
Four apartments.
Three bedrooms.
With, uh, I don't recall the bed, bedroom, it's two bedrooms.
Each one being a two-bedroom.
Okay.
So that-
So the first floor retail is how, how big is the first floor retail? How many businesses are we talking about?
It, it depends how they're going to divide it up.
Okay.
Since they're not leased at this point, someone may take half the building, someone may take the whole building. We don't know at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to be honest with you. You, you do realize that the, but this, we had approval for four two-bedroom units.
Correct.
Which by ordinance only required 3.7 parking spaces.
Correct.
However, in reality, when you have two bedrooms, what do you wind up with?
Could be two. Which will be eight spaces.
Yeah, I, I mean, your ordinance is a little, I don't want you to change it, but your ordinance is a little shy on parking, I think, for residential. So we just want you to, for the trade-off.
Well, right now, right now, we're hearing it new. So there's no trade-off.
So the pro-
Well, no, no, but we were developing the second floor as four two-bedroom units. So I'm not sure that although 3.7, right, over the four parking spaces is the ordinance requirement. If that is the reality, because most people who have two bedrooms, it usually would be a couple, and usually each would have a car. Because we're a little further down from the transportation center, um, than, than to develop it for that. Just a point that we want to create to you. So at the first floor, we have 47.
Right, so what was proposed was four, four apartments on the second floor, uh, parking. So those, that, that structure is pushed up against, um, um, Main Street. Behind it is a nine, uh, parking space, parking lot. There were streetscapes, uh, um, some trash bins and some bicycle racks proposed as well. That's what was proposed and, and approved by this board. What's being, uh, uh, changed, nothing as far as the site improvements. All the site improvements will be identical, the footprint will be identical. It's just the use on the second floor would be changed from, rather than four apartments, to two offices. Roughly, would be equally spaced?
Yes.
2,300 square feet each. The parking lot would remain the same, the streetscape would remain the same, the bicycle racks would remain the same. All the amenities, lighting, trash would all remain the same. Just the use has changed.
So the size of these two businesses that we're putting on the second floor, realistically, you could say that the same-sized businesses could be on the first floor, perhaps bigger. Perhaps retail, perhaps as opposed to offices?
Yes.
So there could be offices downstairs also?
I don't think that's permitted. I don't think that's permitted. I think your ordinance requires retail on the first floor and permits offices or residential on the second floor. So-
Could, could we step through the requirements again on parking? Because I'm not sure that there's complete clarity. So I thi- I think there's agreement, the, the already-approved use require 10 spaces for retail and four spaces for the apartments. For a total of 14 spaces. Is that correct? That's what the, that's what the letter says.
Yes.
Thirteen and a half, which is-
It's 14, yes.
It's 14. Okay, so the retail stays the same, so there's still 10 required for retail. But we have, in the letter here, um, well, that was part of the package. It says, "Assuming second floor area equals first floor area, 4,700 square feet, 11.75 spaces would be required." So that would be 12 spaces for a total of 22. But I believe our planner's letter says-
Less.
18. So I just want to clarify that and, um-
And this is like 21, so I, I, I don't really know.
We calculated, but we, we will defer to your planner's calculations.
Okay.
By all means.
I learned a long time ago to defer to the professionals of the board.
Okay, so, so we still require 10 for retail, and how many for, for the offices?
Sounds like eight?
Yes.
Michael?
It says eight.
So we need 10 and eight, so we need 18. And we have nine.
Nine on site.
There's a variance of nine.
Correct. So previously, there was a variance of five, and now there's a variance of nine.
Four, four additional-
Four additional-
Parking space variance.
Parking spaces vary.
Which we believe would be the minimums in light of the amount of on-street parking. Also, the use itself is not going to generate that many parking spaces employee-wise.
Sure.
Because, uh, the graphic, they do a lot of commute work from home.
Right, right. I, I think from-
I mean, there could be six or nine, but it doesn't be generally-
Depending on what the retail is, if you have retail and residential, you have a real opportunity to share the same parking spaces because typically, the office would be during, or, I'm sorry, the, the retail would be during the day and the apartments would be at night when people come home from work. With office, it's definitely the opposite. You know, office is definitely stronger during the day and almost nothing at night. Now, depending on the retail, if it's a restaurant or, or a bar, let's say, then it would be a good shared parking agreement. But, um, I don't think we could assume that, not wrong with the-
As, as you know, there are other restaurants calling into the area, right? Which would be using the street parking at night and weekends, which we're not using. So I mean, it's a trade-off no matter what.
But we don't know what you're going to be placing on the ground floor, what type of retail, how many employees, what type of business.
I know, but you, we just want to emphasize the fact that we're just asking for a variance for four additional parking spaces. That's from what we got last time. That's the, the difference. I think we have to kind of focus in on that. It's not going to-
I think there's a lot of things we have to focus in on. And I'm looking at that picture, and that's probably what you proposed in 2017. So I live on 4th Avenue, I drive by it just three or four times a day. I see they're still building the four back decks. So how do four apartments become two offices? Show me a picture of what they're going to look like, because that's all we have that I'm aware of. So do you have a new drawing? And have you already started to frame out the inside? Because it looks-
No, there's no framing on the second floor.
Okay.
It's wide open. The exterior of the building is maybe the same.
But, do you understand what I'm saying? It looks like it's, like broken into four apartments on the second floor with balconies.
Yes.
And also those, those four apartments are gone, so why the balconies on the back and the front?
Well, well, I, it's, well, it's one of the reasons for it's, uh, two means of egress from the second floor. So whether it's apartments or offices, you need two sets of stairs going up to it. So we, uh, when we thought about doing this, we realized we didn't have to change the outside of the building to accommodate two offices upstairs. The outside of the building in this is, I don't want to give yourself as an exhibit area.
Don't testify from it.
Then don't.
Just once you start testifying from it, it becomes an exhibit and you're going to have to keep it. And you, it's only a picture, it's not, you're not going to give us too much from an architectural perspective, so.
Well, I'm not going to testify about this then, but I, I can testify. Is that the outside of the building, the front elevation, the main, the fourth ave elevation, and the rear elevation are the same elevations that were approved in the initial application? And the building permits were- and the building permits were issued for that building, I believe, last October.
Wasn't there a timeframe on when this was supposed to be finished?
Yeah, we still have time, and that's something.
Okay, don't beat me up, let me finish.
You're a hundred percent correct, and I think that we have to get into that a little later.
Okay, fine.
Part of the applications.
No, we didn't make that application at this point.
Right now, your timeframe is September of nineteen, as it was amended to include the last.
Correct.
So we're going to make that timeframe?
No.
So when are you going to ask for that variance?
Well, I don't know what's a variance, the last time, whatever, we handled it last time, we made an application at a public hearing, but it didn't require notice, and you granted us the extension. We, you know, construction may or may not be finished by that time, we don't know, so we, when we finish this, we're going to discuss the possibility of an additional extension. We've worked as, you know, fast as we can, there are things that have delayed it, you know, the Dollar Tree took longer than we expected, this was the second project, we know, submit that we really feel that we've improved the area, and we'll continue to do so.
Is it your intent for those nine, designate, nine parking spaces on the west side of the building to designate them specifically for use of certain tenants?
They would be for customers only, either the retail or the office clients. Retail customers or the office clients, the employees would not be allowed, permitted to park in that lot.
Okay, and it's going to, those spaces are going to be designated in the leases for those spaces, for the.
Yes.
Other offices.
Yeah, definitely, they would be advised that employee parking is not permitted on site. So we can reserve those nine spaces. I think you've heard the testimony that the graphic studio has one or two a month in customers.
A week.
Was it a week? Okay, one or two. And then the cosmetologist has two.
Have you had any discussions with any of the businesses in the area where you'd be able to, where the employees would be able to park? Where you'd be able to use their areas to park in, their parking lots?
Well, we do on the site where the Dollar Tree is.
Okay.
But the problem, that's maximized per ordinance.
Okay, so you have not?
Correct.
Okay.
I think there's some other areas that we want to address in the reports before you hear from your professionals.
Okay, just do me a favor, tell us what report you refer to.
You're right, so the first one would be insights report dated July 3, 2019, which describes the project as a zoning review, and we get the number of spaces necessary. It advises us with the redevelopment ordinance permits with testimony that there's adequate on-street parking available, and that off-street parking will be used for a portion of the parking or demand, so that's permitted by your redevelopment ordinance to do that. We've given you the testimony as the type of offices and the way that they're going to operate. Under the development review, trash and recycling is going to be private.
Correct.
That's not going to change. Certification block is going to be as the architectural plans, that's fine.
That is going to change the garbage, because the original proposal said the dollar store would be done by an outside corridor, and the apartments would be done by the city. So now, it's all being done by an outside corridor, so it is changing.
Okay.
Okay.
I apologize, I thought it was.
Right, because we don't pick up businesses, but we have to pick up residential.
Right, so that would be certainly a plus for the city not having to take any of the trash or recycling off of that property. That would all be done by private hauler, right? Four is the certification, five, the application to provide testimony which demonstrates that the architectural elements chosen during construction are aesthetically pleasing.
Nothing's been changed, so that presumably was acceptable to the board previously, and it's not being changed.
Is there adequacy in utility services in the property?
Yes, we've been through that with the city engineer, and as I'd indicated, the demand actually decreases with this proposal.
We're changing, number seven is basically changing the signs.
Correct.
So it would be for customers or patients, whatever we call it. Okay, now, the application must consider according to city and NJ DOT regarding proposed improvements on Main Street. Has that all been done?
Yes, this has a DOT application and, excuse me, approval, and the modification to the proposed use would not, first of all, we don't impact Main Street, because that's been closed off and it will continue to remain that way.
We're coming through the site.
Correct, through fourth. And the increase in traffic is de minimis, it's certainly less than the hundred spaces which would require DOT approval or reapproval.
Number ten is, pardon me, number nine, any proposed changes to impervious coverage as a result of the application? Nothing is changing on site.
No, that's correct.
It's all as was approved before.
No changes in impervious, no increase.
Changing.
No decrease, no increase.
All right, and.
So was it impervious?
Well, I think.
Approved as impervious?
Pardon me?
Was there impervious when it was approved?
Yes, the parking lot's going to remain the same, so I guess the question was, are we increasing any parking areas, or this really, it was maximized with the prior application, and there's going to be no change to that.
No change. Number ten, subject property is recommended for redevelopment for Main Street redevelopment, and we're going to remove a prohibited use and replace it with a permitted use. Prohibited use, I assume is the gas station. We were permitted originally retail, first floor, which we comply with, and second floor can be either offices or residential, so both are permitted uses. Sanitary sewer connections, if necessary, and whether connection fee is required. Whatever fee is required, we're going to pay, but the sanitary sewer, you're going to have less than the four apartments, we decided.
That's correct.
Less usage.
That's correct.
You said you contacted the city engineer earlier?
We did, as part of the prior approval. We would re, you know, we would reconnect with their office to make sure that they understand that the use would actually decrease.
Okay, in the application, there's testimony, the proposed changes in use will have, on the previously submitted easement documents for the cross-access and shared parking areas. Any change?
No, that refers really to the Dollar Tree, because there was a shared parking space with the dry cleaner and the warehouse, so it really is not applicable to this portion of that application.
So, we're limiting this to actually lot two.
Correct.
Just the Getty site. The reason that it's included in full surround package is because the original approval for preliminary final site plan was the total package, developing of both sites, which was granted by the board, but we're actually only developing two. The question was, do I notice everybody within two hundred feet of two? And Jackson knew everybody in the whole area, which we've done. But there is no change to the Dollar Tree or the easements or anything else, it's only this site, number two, and it's only the change from the four residential apartments, two bedrooms each, to the offices. And then we would go into, you have a planner's letter. That would be your planner's letter from dated, it's a memo, actually, the July 3. Basically, it's, it tells you the variances required and the consideration that you need. Your planner will testify that, you know, our planner's going to testify that we feel that we complied with the zoning requirements as for development. Correct?
Yes, it's all permitted, it's all permitted use within the zone and the redevelopment area.
Did you find any negative impact of the granting of this type of variance?
No, this specific property under these circumstances, I don't find a negative impact to this application. The parking would be the only thing that would be close to negative, and I think we've more than demonstrated that there's adequate off-street parking to accommodate the deviation from the ordinance.
And the tenants are not going into this blind, they've been advised of the requirements, that those nine spaces be available to customers, and that they're going to have to find other places to park, which, is that a positive?
They're here and they've heard it, and not only that, but it does, those employees will be encouraged to walk, and a goal of your redevelopment plan is to encourage pedestrian traffic along Main Street, which this will do with all of the employees. So, so it's my, probably want to hear, it's my opinion as a professional planner, all variances can be granted, because the board has the ability to grant these waivers under seat two, as Mr. Sullivan outlined in his memo, that the benefits, in my opinion, as a professional planner, certainly outweigh any detriments, and that they all, that there really is one deviation that we're requesting, and that can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the tenor purposes of zone plan, zoning ordinance, or redevelopment plan.
Do you still feel that way, based on what was mentioned by the, I think it was mayor mentioned about the two-hour parking? Or was that you, Mike? I don't know. There's a change, there's an ordinance change.
Yeah, and we've heard from a lot of businesses at the Parking Committee about, on First, Second, Third, Fourth Ave, about just the lack of parking during the day for customers to service those businesses. So the way we responded was the Parking Committee recommended, and the City Council adopted an ordinance, basically extending the two-hour parking that's on Main Street from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., to extend that along the 800 blocks of First, Second, Third, and Fourth Avenues. So there will only be short-term parking available on-street.
That would be on Main Street?
It's already on Main Street. Two-hour parking is already on Main Street.
But extended to the First, Second, Third, Fourth.
100 block between Main Street and Row.
Correct.
There are still side streets parking available for longer term.
Yes, just not.
Main Street.
Further east.
Just further east or further west, yeah.
Yeah, further east and further west of the 800 block.
Right.
They are there.
East, west, and north, because you're only going to the 800 block, which is what?
I think you're mistaken, so the blocks.
Forget it.
First, Second, Third, Fourth, Fourth Ave immediately adjacent to this site will have two-hour parking.
Okay. We got Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh, we're not extending it that far.
It is actually already on Fifth.
Oh, really?
But not Sixth or Seventh, no.
Okay.
Or Sunset.
So there's not 136 parking spaces available, but there's.
For two hours, there are.
There's a lot of jockeying, but there is available some on-street parking in the area. We have the tenants who currently, you know, one tenant only has two people, two customers, customers can park on the property. The other proposed tenant is aware her employees cannot park, and she is on Madison Avenue now, Madison?
Bangs Avenue.
Bangs Avenue now, with no parking for employees.
No. So you're getting six spots.
I think, I mean.
We just wanted to be clear that you're aware of what the situation is, that's all.
And our job is only to assess the variance and not to talk about operation, but I will just offer that, to me, I think depending on what retail you end up leasing, it actually may make more sense to designate the parking behind the building for the employees, because they may not have a place nearby to park that isn't two-hour parking. Because if you have a retail use that is more of a nightly use, then you have a shared parking opportunity right there. You have your employees during the day, and some restaurant pastry, or whatever it is, at night. So I wouldn't want to necessarily lock in this applicant to specifics about how they designate that parking, but just.
We thought that that would be something that what we'd want, we would certainly prefer not to label it and see how it goes. Obviously, if we have something on the first floor that's going to require those customer parking, we use it more, we will work that out with our tenants, because we're not going to allow them to park there unless we permit it.
Right.
Depending upon the first floor.
Right.
You know, we're technically short nine spaces.
Right.
We feel that there's sufficiently nine around in the area that would work. Obviously, if there's two-hour parking, it may be more advantageous to put the customers on the street.
Correct.
In the area to come, and again, we don't know what the first floor use is, but, you know, we want to develop the site, we want to move forward.
Anything else from the board? Any other questions?
Just, what about signage for the businesses?
Well, you have a sign ordinance, and we would be within the sign ordinance for whatever is required to be on the facade. If any bigger. We don't have the signage yet, so that we can't go for approval, but you have an ordinance that requires signs and facade, percentages, et cetera, and then we will comply with those. It's hard to tell, if someone takes the whole first floor, then we could have a smaller sign for them, just don't know.
Just as a point of trying to tie it up off the ends, it's not usually great to just leave the signs as some random thing that happens and just conforms to the ordinance, because just because something conforms doesn't mean it fits with the architecture or the facade or things like that, so maybe worthwhile for the board to retain jurisdiction over the sign in terms of how it fits on the building or something.
And we have no problem with that, because once we know what the tenant makes will be, we could do it. It could be a little national change that requires a specific logo, we just don't know at this point, but we have no problem in leaving that open-ended and having the board some, for that public hearing, their design, committee approving the signage or something to that effect, we have no problem with that at all. Right, Bill?
When we got the building permit, the architectural elevation, ten blocks on the front of the building for the sign, but if we have one tenant, we don't need two signs, we have two tenants, obviously. We were planning on putting signs and really had talked about it, but we didn't see the necessity of having signs on the rear of the building for your business.
So how would they know you're there? When you're walking by and saying, oh?
Yeah, we don't have, right now, we currently have like tiny little placards, it's not like an off-street destination, so we always give our, you know, guests or our office exact directions on to get there. If anything, we probably put something small next to the front door. We don't need to advertise to block, like, for traffic that would be there.
Along those lines, can we just go over access briefly, because that just stirred something in my head? So, previously, what was proposed with the apartments, were they only accessible from the back stairways?
Correct.
Okay, so that will remain the case for the office, those customers or patients to these businesses would still only access the business from the rear staircases, okay?
Great. There's going to have to be some signage to tell them.
There's going to have to be some signage.
We agree with that, there has to be some signage, we will comply with A, with your ordinance, and B, if you would like to reserve jurisdiction, we can submit it back to your technical or to your professionals for approval, we have no problem with that.
Unless the board wants to see. And then you'll go back and do it. It's your call.
Whatever you prefer.
Whatever your call is, it's your call.
Is there anything else?
Any questions from you, or?
Or is any other questions from the board? We're done? Yes, from the public? Question from the public?
Yeah, I'm curious, can identify yourself, please, for a moment, and.
Can you pick up?
Paul McEvelin from Interfaith Neighbors at 804 Avenue, which is the adjacent property. Thank you. So my question is this, in seeking the approval of the original application, did the applicant rely on, or did the board rely on the fact that they had the possibility of turning a space twice in a 24-hour period in granting a variance, or five, that was five short in accordance?
Say that so I can understand it.
So this goes to the point that Ms. Menzel made earlier, in the original application, we had retail agreed, and we had residential above. And there is some thinking that in a situation like that, one space can be turned twice in a 24-hour period. So in the original application, did the applicant rely on in seeking a variance for parking to be provided, which was nine or? to be provided, which was nine, or as I understood, fourteen, is required, did the applicant rely on the fact that they were gonna be able to turn that space, each space, twice in a 24-hour period, or did the board rely on that fact in approving that?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what the question is for, I don't know what the board relied upon, we had always shown the exhibit, and we had always indicated that we felt there was sufficient off-street parking to make up for the four or five parking spaces we missed.
I think the short answer is no.
There's nothing in the, there's nothing in the resolution, and the finding is a fact, and talk about that, and the only way we're ever gonna know that is if we review the record of the testimony before the board, nobody's gonna recall that.
I was gonna say, Jack, I don't recall that discussion.
That's the only way you're gonna find out for sure, I don't recall, so may or may not have acted, but I can't state with certainty.
And actually, based on who was here, Jim was the only one that was on the board at the time.
I was. I don't remember.
According to, maybe that day.
I wasn't, I actually, I...
I had a B team.
Yeah, I had a B team, I think, I was on vacation, but, I think it was in Italy, but we had, I know in the preparation of the testimony, we had prepared the charts for the show of the off-street parking, which was one of our main thrusts, existence of the off-street parking, so I have said the exhibit is from 2016, and we applied in 17. Hard to tell what was in your heads when you made the decision.
All right, can I get a motion for a public comment on the application?
Move it over to the public.
Second. Hi.
This is a comment, not related to testimony, it's just a general comment.
This is a general comment, yes, this is the time.
I think you have to come to the mic and...
Yes, please.
Right, be on the oath, right?
Oh, yes, please, yes.
And are we doing...
That's how we make it official.
Please raise your hand, you swear affirm the testimony during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and everything that's true.
I do.
State your name for the record and spell your last name.
Paul McEvilly, M.C.E.V.I.L.Y., representing Interfaith Neighbors, located at 810 Fourth Avenue, which is the property adjacent to the property under discussion. So we've been operating at that location since 2000, 20 years at that location. When we first came to that location, the north end of Main Street was pretty quiet, and the last 20 years, there are a lot more businesses and a lot more activity at the north end of Main Street, and while I applaud the applicant for finally taking down the old Getty Gas Station, and very much look forward to having neighbors at 810 Fourth Avenue, I do have some concerns about parking. Parking became a problem in the area when Railroad Avenue was redesigned, eliminating perpendicular parking in favor of parallel parking. That's when parking became an issue at the north end of Main Street. Since 2016, I think there are several new businesses that are operating in that several block area, we ourselves have approximately 25 employees working at the 810 Fourth Avenue location, and our employees at this point, while we have onsite parking available both to our employees, as well as to those clients that are coming to our location for services, as well as for the fleet of 10 to 12 trucks that we have, during the course of any given business day, there are people that are pulling onto our property to park in one of our off-street parking spaces because they cannot find parking at the street. When I come out of the building many a night at 6:30 or 7:00 o'clock, there are cars, not related to Interfaith Neighbors, parked in our parking lot. So while, as I say, I look forward to the continued development of the north end of Main Street, and very much look forward to that building being completed, which I think will be a major plus to Main Street, I just wanted to share with the board that parking, like it is elsewhere in the city, is an issue, and our employees are already parking across the railroad tracks, and with additional activity in the area, they will start pushing into residential neighborhoods on the west side of the track, and residential neighborhoods east of Main Street, just something to point out for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Any comments from the board? All right, let's close, any other public comment? Let's close, motion to close?
Move to the coach.
Second.
Hi.
Any comments from the board members?
So this is not an easy case for me, being the transportation director here in the city, on one hand, I don't believe that the applicant has, you know, really done any occupancy studies to prove that there won't be a negative impact to parking based on the change in use, on the other hand, I think the applicant's correct in saying that four apartments, four two-bedroom apartments most likely would have generated eight cars, whereas the businesses here, we're looking at potentially generating nine cars at most. So I think it's kind of a tough call for us to really assess what the parking impact will be, not having that additional analysis, that's just my two cents.
I totally agree with you, it's a tough decision, but it's a decision that you weren't aware of, that two other applicants since June 17 or 16 have made the same spiel, that there's tons of parking, as Interfaith has stated, as I've stated at their hearings, hey, guys, I live on Fourth Avenue, I drive by there, like, I'm not saying anything about your study, but past studies by the Board of Education, they're saying there's no impact, they're out of their minds, and Mr. McEvilly's absolutely right, Stoner Place Railroad Avenue, whatever you want to call it, was done by DOT, the city fought it like hell and said, no, put it back the way it was, and they wouldn't do it, so they took away like 10 to 15 parking spots, so between all the businesses being proposed, between the other two applicants that are still in front of us, or been approved, using maybe the same parking spots, which we don't know, and that's like, you know, the million-dollar question, it's just like the city of Asbury Park is continuously push parking, or kick the can down the road on parking, I love both of your clients, their prospective tenants, but just because of the lack of parking and not knowing who's going in on the first floor, I'm gonna have to vote no on this.
On the reverse side of that, we don't know what the tenant on the ground floor is going to be, it is possible that if you get the correct tenant, or proper tenant, you may alleviate some of the parking issues, so it's kind of a toss-up, but I certainly understand what you're saying, John, and I think that the fact that there is a, for a better term, office use on the second floor, rather than a residential use, I think there's a potential for alleviating some of the parking problems, so I think in some respects, although the ordinance requires certain calculations to be made, I think there's a potential that the new proposed use is a better fit than the prior one, so, you know, it's kind of a six of one and a half a dozen of the other.
There's also that, you kind of worry that we're looking at a five-year lease of these particular areas, and also looking at it to say, you know what, we hope that the businesses grow, we hope that there's more people that want, that your employees increase, that your business increases, that's what you'd hope, I would think, for the next five years, so those numbers would have to increase, and how many, where the clients will have to go, where the employees will have to go, it's tough, because a lot of us weren't here for the initial application, and now here we are, so it's a little harder for us to kind of go through this, but, yeah, I think that, it's a tough one, it's a tough one.
And for me, it's the unknown, it's not, the business is on the second floor, it's what's gonna happen on the first floor, and how is that gonna impact the city, and how is that gonna impact the streetscape, and I know that based on the numbers you've projected...
Well, we, finish, I want to go out.
Based on the numbers that are projected, we've already agreed to it, but now it feels like a new application, I know it isn't, but it feels like a new application.
I, if I could put it in a little bit of perspective, we have a city that is growing, and the parking is limited, I mean, they're on Bangs Avenue now, they have no parking, okay, this is, people expect that they're going to have a parking problem as the city grows, you're not gonna add more parking spaces to the city, we're talking here about a change that would be an additional, five?
Four.
Four, four additional parking spaces that we don't, I know.
It's nine, but I understand, this application says four.
But each application stands on its own, and we're looking for four additional parking spaces, and I think that I would agree with you that the trade-off between the residential and the office is not that hard to conceive, because two-bedroom apartments have usually two cars, okay, possibly more, but I would assume two cars, and not the 3.7 that's calculated to your ordinance, and we're only doing ordinance calculations, your ordinance only requires a total of 18 parking spaces, you know, we have nine, so that it's, when we say that it's not gonna be a tremendous negative detriment, we're talking about nine parking spaces, we're not talking about 90 parking spaces, and I think that that's something that would work, you know, when businesses get too big, they're gonna have to move, because their clients or their employees won't be able to park in the area, and they'll have to leave, these are small businesses, they're gonna remain small businesses, and other tenants who come in are gonna, in five years, if the leases are not renewed, are gonna see what's on the first floor, and they're gonna make a decision whether or not they can function based upon what's in the area, no matter where you go in town, parking, so, come down here on a weekend, you know what it's like, and it's still thriving, so I would respectfully submit that the town will thrive with this type of small variance for the site.
Is there any comment that our professionals would like to add, based on everything that we've heard here? Just asking.
Would you like to reconsider, or do you want to vote?
I have to discuss that, but like... Give us five, three, two.
I was gonna, yeah, move to recess for two minutes.
Second.
Hi. Motion to come out of recess?
Second.
Hi.
Here.
Here, John Moore.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Mattella.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Seifax.
Here.
Here.
Barbara Kita.
Here.
We discussed, I discussed the suggestion that Jack gave, but we don't know what we would come back with, we don't have any... I appreciate it, no, I appreciate it, we don't have the first floor rented, we don't have any prospective tenants at this point, so we don't know what the mix is going to be, however, we do have an approval from you, which we would have to proceed if you deny this application, that we have, and we do have five variants now, so we need four more, we have five cars, we have an existing variance, and we would put residential upstairs, we feel that this is a better alternative, both to us and to the city, to have these businesses there, in order to get the businesses, the numbers are there, we need four more, we need a variance for four more additional parking spaces that don't exist, we don't want to trade off anything on the, we're maxed on the Dollar Tree site, so that we can't permit some of the people...
Mark, in their, excuse me, in their lease, it gives them the absolute right to those spaces adjacent to this.
The Dollar Tree, yeah, we can't change the Dollar Tree, because the Dollar Tree, that's a long-term lease, but we would respectfully submit that this is, I know you're on the fence, not everybody, but it's not gonna make or break parking in the city of Asbury Park, it's four more additional parking spaces, and if we rent the first floor to a different type of use, then it'll be, it'll work.
No, 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 we're not gonna reopen the case.
Testimony...
Turn it, turn it down.
I just asked if you wanted the option...
No, no, test, I'm just submitting.
Take a back step and come back.
No, no, okay, and we're gonna submit on the testimony we've given, we do want to bring a tenant that's now on Bangs Avenue, no parking, to the property, so that there is a trade-off of parking spaces that are on Bangs Avenue, that are not gonna be used by her employees.
Okay.
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 I...
Motion to approve the application.
I'll second.
We need some conditions.
Were there any conditions, Jack?
Yeah, conditions that I would have are the compliance with insights report, the contents of that, trash removal of the private, signage in accordance with the ordinance, and come back to the board for approval, or if you decide to have to go to the DRC for approval, it's up to you.
Would it go, would, would it be DRC, design review, it would be DRC? I would think.
I agree.
DRC, design review, they should come back for the, to the design review.
Right, that's what I have.
Also, other prior, prior conditions?
Anything from the prior approvals that are not affected by this one will remain in effect all conditions, that standard in any...
So that's my motion, to approve with those conditions.
Okay.
I'd second.
We didn't talk about customers only, because you wanted some changes there.
It's up to you, you want that to be a condition of your approval?
Well, so the original approval had, had...
The original request, is it, does it matter what was requested?
Well, the original resolution had some, some conditions in there for...
Customers only.
Customers only, so if we were to just leave that, right?
So we'd leave it as customers only, and then employees outside?
Yeah.
I would feel more comfortable with the employees using the spot, being there all that time, customers are coming and going, so that really doesn't make very much sense.
So maybe we should make the condition...
And I agree, it's true.
An open, open parking arrangement, undesignated spaces.
Undesignated.
All onsite parking and designated.
Correct.
To make the best use of the spaces.
Correct.
Got it.
What happens to the time frame?
I'll request that next.
Oh, okay.
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
That's not part of this application. No, you didn't notice for it, it's a condition.
It wasn't, it wasn't noticed last time.
Well, maybe I'll make you notice this time, I don't know, but it's not part of this application, and I'm not gonna let them vote on it, it's not in your application, it's not before the board, if you want to understand, you have to, it's a condition of approval, but you want to stand. Here's a second.
Jim.
Jim.
Council of the Law State.
Yes.
Mayor John Moore.
Yeah.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Michael Mattella.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Trudy Seifax. Come on, Jim.
Let me, let me just clarify this in my head, are we voting on having the parking for employees and customers find on-street parking?
Yes.
Is that what we're voting for? Okay, in that case, yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Barbara Kita.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, just for the point of... Thank you. Thank you. Just for point of order. Okay. So let's, while the board's here, discuss it. We don't have to decide on it tonight.
Only if they want to, what, you keep pushing it. I'm, it's not before the board. Not in your application.
Right.
You didn't, you didn't apply for it. So now you want more relief than you've actually requested.
We will, we will correspond the same way we did last time for the extension as requested, and we'll come back for another little session. I was just taking the board's time, that they don't have to do a separate thing.
But they do have to do a separate thing, because it's not before them.
I will correspond the same manner we did last time for the extension. Okay? Thank you very much.
Hold on, before anybody goes anywhere? That's right. We don't have any resolutions. Just a moment. Just a moment, just to understand how we handle this, Jack, because we have a situation, and maybe I'm wrong.
It's not for me.
No, no.
That's something else.
All right, can you please? Outside, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for you guys for showing. It's really very much appreciated that you come. Thank you. How do we, do we have any applications? I'm talking about July 22nd. Do we have any applications that are in the hopper?
We do not.
We do not. So. All right, is this the place where we would do that? Or is that? Okay, so then, at this point, we have no applications. And even if we did have an application, that information should have been to Insight and Michael by today.
How do you wait?
No, 10 days. We know, hey, we know the rules. So it's actually, it's three weeks, but whatever, or 10 days, whichever we have to do. So, so we have nothing. Nothing was provided. We have nothing to, we won't have any time to review it. They won't have enough time to do it. We have nothing. So on Ju, July 22nd, the meeting is canceled. You may. Do we have to vote?
One question.
All right, wait a second. Hold on a minute. Yvonne has a question.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Since we're still dealing with the I-Star.
Yes.
Is that something I could put in that list?
No, actually, actually, we could not, because.
We carried it.
We carried it, but at the same time, the reason why we could not do it on July 22nd is because I-Star's attorney said that they were not available.
Right.
So we moved it at that time.
Okay.
That's the only reason we chose these dates. And so, yes, it's unusual for us to have a date. We would have liked to have done I-Star, but they said no. Oh, you're coming to it. We're doing other things. All right. All right, so we have to do a vote?
Sure.
Sure, let's vote.
Councilwoman Longfane.
I second it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Longfane.
Yes.
Mayor John Henry. Jennifer Henry.
Yes.
Michael Mattella. Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Trudy Seifax.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Barbara Kita.
Yes. One more thing before we go? I know, there's always one more thing. Sorry?
I said you sound like Kalobo.
There's always one more thing. Just so that you guys know, that for the Master Plan Reexamination Committee, we're meeting, I think it's on the 29th.
Yes.
With Michael. Was it 29th, was it? Something in that area. Monday, the 29th, the committee is meeting to go over what the plans are and what we're going to do with, and what we've already done with the master plan, reexamine, and what we have the money to do. And so we're going to meet at that point to review that, and then obviously we'll share that with everybody here.
Implementation of the Master Plan Reexamination Report, Master Plan Update through the ordinances.
Yep.
Orders amendments.
In the City Managers Conference.
Right, right. Rick, Rick will be sending out the invites to the appropriate people. And.
Could we just make sure there's a notice maybe posted on the city website that says the meeting's canceled on July 22nd?
Oh, yeah, follow through.
Right? Hey, motion to adjourn.
Second.